Item carries, item double J, consideration and authorization to reject proposals as received for RFP 090902, infirmary medical services. Mike? Can I share your answer? You had a question on that?
Yes. You're saying we're gonna reject this proposal, right?
That's correct.
That's the committee's recommendation?
Yes, sir, and the main reason for it was the best case scenario or the best proposal was well over the current budget to the tune of close to a million dollars.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to reject by Commissioner Garcia? Do I have a second by Commissioner Tamayo? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Don't go too far, Mike. Item double K, consideration authorization to award subject to contract approval by Commissioners Court the following bids: jail physician services on the infirmary, RFQ 1515, Alberto Almeida. How many responses did we get to that RFQ?
We received two, Judge.
Okay, there was two local doctors?
No, the second was an actual physician head company called Maximus Physician Resources out of Dallas, Texas.
Okay, so we just got one physical doctor from here?
One here.
I guess I just had a, I guess I had a concern in that if we went out for RFQ, I mean before, man, we could, we'd always get a whole bunch of doctors wanting to do the jail contract, and then now we just get one that provides a proposal. That just kinda struck me a little on the outside. Did you try to contact any other doctors or, you know, why they didn't, or did you get any feedback from anyone as to wanting to but they didn't want to? I guess...
No, we have a list of physicians and the mailing was successful. As far as feedback, I know there was one other physician interested, but he missed the deadline and I did mention that to the committee as to, you know, was there an interest to re-advertise and start the process over again? But that was the only feedback we got. Of course, it's advertised in the newspaper as well.
Did we in any way, shape, or form involve our county health authority and utilize him as, you know, outreach?
No, sir, no.
Because, you know, he has, you'd figure that we would at some point in time. He has an extensive network in dealing with many physicians in our community, you know, in his capacity.
That's all I have.
Or even in the evaluation process, I think that we oughta possibly, you know, use him for something of that.
Well, yeah, and that's, I don't know why we wouldn't have used him on this one, since they're gonna be talking a lot. Any reason?
No.
Mike?
When I basically checked to see who, you know, the interest, it was the standing committee and I checked with the sheriff and he did, Mike Leonard, the committee as well. Certainly that's...
And maybe not necessarily as a committee, but just as a consultant-type advisor or whatever.
Mike, who is filling in at the present time?
It's this physician.
Dr. Almeida's there right now.
So he's already there.
I'll make a motion to approve. Move by Commissioner Wood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion?
I think that we should consider advertising, re-advertising this position and I don't think, I know I got two calls from individuals that expressed an interest, one of which missed a deadline, and we probably should at least...
Did he miss the deadline because you didn't know about it?
Didn't know about it, or didn't get the information in time or something. But, you know, one applicant, really, is all we had. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
You used the same process in letting the word out, did you not?
Right, we advertised in the newspaper as well, twice, two Sundays in a row. If you'd like to go that route, then we could take...
Well, I mean, I would agree, but we have a motion and a second to approve, and let's see how that goes, because I would like to go out and...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your timeline? I mean, is there an urgency to get this done, or do we have time?
That'd probably be a question I'd have to pose to the sheriff.
Well, someone is providing the service now.
He is.
Right.
I would need to know that before I could vote.
We wanted to move on with it, I mean, I didn't want to...
Excuse me?
Wanted to move on with it.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Commander Leop from the Sheriff's Office for the Jail Division. And we did wanna move on with, I guess, the committee's recommendation, the doctor.
But, well, I think the question was, was there a sense of urgency of doing this? Because there's a doctor in place now.
Yes.
So it's not like we don't have a doctor.
How is he being compensated now? Is it different than what it would be if he were under contract? I mean...
No, on the figures, I wouldn't really know, but the doctor, what was the doctor?
Almeida.
He's providing the service at this time and doing a good job.
He's getting compensated, though?
Yes.
You know, for this. I think the question was, is he getting compensated more or less versus the way he's doing it now or getting a contract? Or is he on a month-to-month at the same, at the same level that a prior physician was getting? Anybody know?
Martha?
Judge and Commissioners, I'm not, I'm not real sure on how much he's getting paid, but I do know that he's under contract for a very, a temporary time, and we'd have to check to see, because I don't remember if we gave him three months or if we said until, you know, a new doctor was selected. So we'd also have to check on that.
I think the jail would like to move forward. I mean, have it in limbo still, get it approved if we could.
Could you get close to them? Mike, I'm not, I didn't get your full statement. What was that?
I said, I think we would like to move forward if at all possible. I mean, I'd like to, you know, move on with this and not having several doctors come in and try to do what he's doing.
Well, my intent is not to change because he's there already. My intent is to possibly make sure that we find out if there's more interest out there, that's it.
Sure, that's...
And he's already there.
Sure, that'll be up to y'all.
And my question was, did they follow the same procedure? Because, I mean, if now they're saying, and I don't know, no one called me, but I would think that if someone was interested, they would have responded. And my main concern, and I don't mind, I mean, we can do it over again, but I didn't want a gap of time where we would jeopardize our position with the doctor's position there. That was my question.
Well, I would, I mean, I leave that up to y'all if y'all wanna to do it that way, but I'd like to move forward with it.
Mike, what would be the length of time if we were to re-advertise?
We could have an RFQ out next week with the two and three weeks, and certainly we can include the Health Authority with the committee and see if we can get more proposals back this time around.
So we're talking, I mean, thirty to forty-five days at the most?
Right.
I think that's what we ought to do.
And if the big bag would still be covered with a doctor, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, we had a motion and a second to approve the contract with the, with Dr. Almeida. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, do I have another motion? Make a motion to re-advertise, include the, our Health Authority, expedite it, you know, just follow the process quickly as you can, and then move forward. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And include Dr. Castillo.
Yeah. Item six A, budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules. Javier, welcome back.
Judge and Commissioners, the budget, there was both but a, one budget amendment and line item transfers that were laid before you. On the first page, that's the budget amendment setting up the budget for the disaster recovery grant for that particular account. On the other two pages, the line item transfers within the departments, nothing really extraordinary within those, there's no salary schedules presented.
Second? Move by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Wood to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries.
Judge, can we do item six P before the claims?
Six P?
Yes, sir.
Item six P, consideration approval to make final payment to Beck Disaster Recovery and Series Environmental for services provided during Hurricane Dolly.
Judge, Commissioners, I've decided we pulled out of order. In your packet, there's a breakdown of the costs and the amounts that are due to Beck and Series in result of the services provided during Hurricane Dolly. The second sheet will actually be requirements needed for the audit, and the audit is requiring that we identify a copy of all checks supporting payment for services rendered during the hurricane. Before, I was asking if the item could be approved so we can proceed and issue the check in preparation for the audit.
Okay.
The auditor recommends that we approve this expense?
Yes, it's your idea, ma'am.
Okay, move to approve. Second? Move by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Approval of claims?
I have payroll dated February the 5th for $1,584,863.05. I have ones number 232-579 through 233-287, except for a check that was voided, number 232-592. I also have ACH drafts for $186,572.38, which are health-related benefits.
Your agreement of approval.
I also add the claim that was just, the two claims that were just mentioned for Series and Beck for $1,626,915.25 for your approval.
Yes? Do I hear motion to approve?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Approval of minutes for January the 7th, 2010, special meeting, January 7th, 2010, regular meeting, January 21st, 2010, regular meeting. Are the minutes ready for the Commissioners' approval?
Motion for approval? Do you have one?
One question on the meeting of the 21st on Agenda Item 6E. I just wanted to make sure that it reflected on the motion, that it was with an explanation of what happened in the loss of those breakers, and I don't think it was in the minutes as they were printed. So if we can agree to just making sure, and I believe Sophie made the motion and I seconded, if that line reads with an explanation to Commissioners Court, you know, because I'm still waiting for my explanation. If I hadn't gotten it, I wouldn't have said anything.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we just table that? Why don't we table that one and just bring it back with those corrections, I think?
That's fine.
Motion for approval on January the 7th, special and regular meetings.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, same by Commissioner Garcia.
And table in the...
And table in January 21st, 2010, so the added explanation can be provided on the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries.
Judge, I would like to respectfully ask the Court to pull item R out of order to discuss and take it up at this time.
Item R, discussion of possible action regarding travel policies for members of the Cameron County Commissioners Court.
And I wanna make that as in a form of a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to make that in a form of a motion.
I'll second.
To do what?
To put it out of order.
To put it out of order.
Oh, okay, I already read it. Move by Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Out of order.
Judge, last Thursday, I became aware that there was a trip being planned to Washington, and so I called David Garcia and I asked him to make arrangements for me to go. That was about 9:30 in the morning, and at about 2:45 that afternoon, he called me and told me that I couldn't go because you had said that that would constitute a quorum. Okay, now, I would like to know where it states and if there is a policy in place that allows you to choose who goes and when.
Okay. I don't know if we have a policy in place, per se. Let me address the quorum issue. The quorum issue came up January of '09, where we got a long email from Richard about three of us going to these types of meetings, and so that automatically just kept more than two from going. In terms of policy, I don't know if we do have a policy. I think protocol is, is county judge, the chief executive officer goes to these meetings, and the Judge Pro Tem was also going to the meeting. I found out not too long before that about the Washington trip as well. We knew about the Austin trip, and then this one came about, and David was trying to schedule everyone, but as far as a policy about who goes and who doesn't go, I don't know if we have anything in writing, per se, for that. We can certainly address that and look at it, but that's as far as it goes. But the main reason for that was that in order, after being advised by council that more than two members traveling on this type of meeting would constitute a quorum and an illegal meeting, that's what would set the precedent for that particular travel.
And...
And I think if legal, you know, wants to tell us something different, that's fine, but I was going under that. Now, as far as who travels, I don't know if we have a policy in place as to who goes, who doesn't go.
I would think that any commissioner, if they have a specific reason for wanting to go to Austin or Washington, would be able to place that, but perhaps we need to determine how far ahead we need to let UNO and let the county administrator know. But I would think that any of us, if we have a specific reason for going, should...
And as long as we don't violate a...
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and as long as we don't violate a quorum. David, you may want to explain how, you know, the trip came about and...
Well, I think I could probably, I can probably give some insight on that, you know? The trip that was scheduled had been pretty much something that had been discussed when Chairman Overstar was down here. And when he was down here and spent the time he did that weekend visiting with us and us showing him the projects that we needed to work on, and as a result of that, we were asked to do a follow-up visit with him, especially on some of the stimulus projects that are ongoing in the county. I asked David Garcia to put something together, and I asked him to invite the county judge. Some of the issues and, you know, I mean, we were, he was much more well-received than I was in some offices that are like ours. I was more... Had received in some offices that are these, okay? And that's the reality that we live with. So when I visited with David and Pete, I asked him, I says, "Look, we were asked by Chairman Overstar to have a follow-up visit. We were asked that we present certain things," and that's why there's actually an agenda item that I had in place previous to this item being on there, to make sure that we could give a small report on what had occurred during this meeting. But it was a direct result of a, and again, we will more than likely be asked to visit again. At the discussion in one of the committees, they want some testimony on some relations to the stimulus spending, from our experiences and what we've done. So they have a meeting, I think it's every third Friday, where the House Transportation Oversight Committee meets, and they asked David that we needed to be kinda like prepared for that one to occur, okay? Who is best qualified to go? Who is, you know, I don't know. I've been trying to push transportation issues to make improvements in this county since day one that I got on this commission. Maybe overstep my bounds sometimes, but you know what? If somebody doesn't do something, it ain't moving. That's what I found out, and I'm gonna move.
Commissioner Garcia, I agree with you, okay? And you have been here and you are obviously very well aware of a lot of the transportation issues and projects that we have ongoing. I've been here three years, and not once have I received notice that anybody was going to Washington until after the fact. Now, somebody's transportation issues on my precinct, and I was voted in by precinct one to represent them. And I really, it upsets me that you all do this and that Pete and David go along with it because they know very well that neither Commissioner Wood or I are gonna be asked to go because they don't want us there.
I've asked you to go, Commissioner Benavides.
Never been asked to go to Washington?
I've asked Commissioner Wood to go.
And I've traveled in the past. I haven't recently.
Yeah.
But I think there's a solution to some of this if we look at it closely enough. I know that there are other counties that do travel in quorums, and it's a matter of posting the meeting, and perhaps our attorneys can visit with some of the other county's attorneys and indicate, you know, figure out how they can post the meetings. It apparently isn't that difficult. I have had some conversations with some folks in urban council of counties and things like this, that it happens based on posting the meetings and can be done.
And not only that, not only that. If that was a problem, I could leave after you all left. I could stay in a different hotel. I could meet with different representatives at different times if the quorum is such a problem. Now, we were all in attendance at a meeting or at a dinner with Congressman Overstar, and all of us were there. I'm not aware that there was any agenda posted.
There was no...
Exactly. And we were there to show forcing numbers.
There was no agenda posted, but if you recall at that meeting, Commissioner, from one end of that long room to the other, the Commissioners were spread totally apart from each other, and it was done because I didn't know what else to do, okay?
And I appreciate that, Commissioner Garcia.
Well, let me just shed some light on this. Number one, on this recent visit, and I want to thank you, and I can hardly wait to hear what transpired, the one thing that could have been done better, and I'm not opposed to the two of you going, as long as a job gets done, I don't care who goes, but I think that what could have been done in a better fashion, and I'm asking our county administrator to please do this in the future, to just keep us informed, and let's have better communication in the future. I got an email saying that you were going to Washington. I would have liked to have some background on, you know, they will be going, this is what they, this is the issues they'll be presenting and so on. I would like to know that before. And just, I think there was a, I'm not saying this was done on purpose or whatever. It wasn't done by design, but I think that our communication can be better, number one. Number two, when I went last year to Washington, Commissioner Benavides, and I think you have the right to do this, I talked to our county administrator after Dolly and after the information came out on the stimulus package. I was quite upset in the fact that stimulus money was not designated for drainage problems and so on, it was just for roads, and I wanted to have an opportunity to go to Washington and go before the Transportation Committee and address that, which I did. So I think, but I did that with plenty of time. I think you have the right to say, "I wanna go to Washington," but I think you need to make sure that you have the timeline there so that things can be prepared and it can be in an orderly manner.
Right, the same token.
But for the, for the, all of us to be, have better communication, and I think the communication has been improved in the last few years, but I think it can be better. So that's my input on this. Whenever I have a specific issue, I can assure you that I will go to the judge and I will go to the county administrator, and I will be going to Washington. And I think we all have that right, but we do need to communicate with each other, and I know in this trip, I did agree that Commissioner Garcia should have gone because of the fact that he was so instrumental in bringing the chairman down and so on. But I think that we need more information when this Washington trips are gonna take place.
I also think whenever we go to Washington, we need to try to cover as many bases as we can, and if that prior information, as Commissioner Tamayo's talking about, had been disseminated, there may have been some issues that some of us, three of us that didn't go, could have added to the two that did go or other subjects or other issues that they may have brought up or at least touched on while they're there, because it's an expensive venture being, going to Washington, and we need to cover everything we can when we go there. And I know no one is opposed to bringing up the issues that we're all concerned about. However, if we do go, as Commissioner Benavides mentioned, as a group by posting the meeting, then it does show a real emphasis on what we believe is important for the county, and I think it helps the legislators in Washington understand that we're concerned about it and we're there supporting it as unified.
Yeah, we used to move forward, and you go, I think we used to do that, where more than a quorum would go, and I think, I asked Richard to go ahead and come in to discuss this, because we talked about, I said, "How about if we post the meetings and do that?" And Richard, go ahead, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, go ahead and explain to you, explain what you told us last year.
There's several issues that kind of bear, and they're all relevant to the Open Meetings Act. First of all, to start, you know, anytime there are three Commissioners involving either listening to, discussing, or conducting, you know, county business or policy, then it's a meeting, okay? And it's a meeting whether it's, you take three Commissioners and two go in and then one comes in after them, doesn't work that way, that's a walking quorum. So anytime there are three Commissioners involved, there's going to be a meeting if it's discussing county policy or county business, you know, if it comes for the business. And discussing means listening to also. Now, you can't post a meeting in Washington, DC because of the notice requirements, you have to post it in a place that's accessible to the public here, and Washington, DC simply is not accessible to...
They're posted here. No one's saying you would post it in DC. What I'm saying is, other counties do this, and they post meetings in order to be able to do it, and they post it, I'm sure, just like we do at our county courthouse.
I have, how do you...
And they spoke, so you can talk to them, Richard.
I don't know about other counties, but that's a violation of the Act. If you, if you in fact meet, if you post it here and meet in Washington, DC, Washington, DC has to be accessible to the public from Brownsville. There's a case or an AG's opinion, I can't remember, I can look it up for you, but in point where that's exactly what they did. The Commissioners Court posted a meeting in a council's office in Washington, DC, a bond council, they all wanted to attend, so they posted it, they all attended, it was an illegal meeting because it's not accessible to the public.
No, I'm not saying post it up there, Richard. We're saying post it here, the meeting would be held up there. People have access to Washington if they want to go, just like they do here.
That's exactly...
And that's the way other counties are doing it.
Well, they can't do it. I'm tired, I mean, that's the exact, that is the exact scenario that I just said. That county posted the meeting properly.
Let us clarify, I think there's a misunderstanding. You're talking about posting a meeting at our courthouse for meeting someplace else.
Correct.
That's correct, and you're saying that we cannot do that?
That's right. It's not because it's illegally posted, it's posted in the right place, it's because the meeting's not accessible, it has to be held in a place accessible to the public. So you can't post a meeting legally here for an area, for a place that's not accessible to the public at Brownsville.
But that makes sense.
You said Brownsville.
That makes sense.
Doesn't have to be Brownsville. We can post a meeting here at our courthouse and have a meeting for Isabel.
That's correct.
That's accessible to the public.
That's accessible.
Austin's accessible to the public, and Washington, DC's accessible to the public. They lock the doors.
I would quarrel with Austin and certainly with Washington, DC.
I tell you, you know, when we show up at these meetings and there's more elected officials present, it carries a lot more weight.
It makes a big difference.
Yeah, and I don't think anyone is disputing that.
No, nobody's disputing that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're either going to listen or adhere to the advice of council or we're not, and maybe you oughta look at how other counties are doing it, maybe they're doing it, it's like our meetings that we moved to Thursdays because of the payroll issue. Other counties are still meeting on Tuesdays and probably not in compliance with that payroll issue, but we changed it, we discovered it was not appropriate. As far as accessibility, the other thing that you have to post is you have to post a, as I understand it, a specific meeting place. You can't say meeting in Washington, DC. As you know, you go from building to building to building, you know, how are you going to do, how are you gonna post it with building in Reagan Room Number 505, and then they move it, you know what, it's too small, let's move it to Room Reagan 525. That's a logistical issue, but I think what Richard is saying is that there's not a problem with the posting issue, he can post it, but he's saying that, you know, the public is not readily accessible to be able to go to DC, nor is the media. It wouldn't be an open meeting, so, I mean, I think that's where we have to go, unless someone can provide us some legal... information that says it's okay to do that. Commissioner Benavides brought up about, well, I would have flown separately, stayed in another hotel, gone separately, you know, and I don't know how that would work if you're meeting the same people that were meeting. How would that work, Richard?
If you're not together, that would work.
I was looking at the law and as I've got it now, what?
Well, Commissioner, yeah, have her explain it to you.
I suggest that, I mean, the reasoning that was given to me was that we couldn't go because there would be three of us. So what's to say that I couldn't leave after they left, flew out on a different flight, stayed at a different hotel, and after they had visited with whoever they were going to visit, then I would go in and I would visit with those Congressmen that I would be going to visit.
Okay, we presume that it's about county business you're visiting on, or you wouldn't be there. And if that being the case, then that's a walking quorum, it's an illegal meeting.
No, Richard, I disagree with you and I'm going to tell you. Not too long ago, okay, the judge gave orders that in an EOC, if it was up in operation, if more than two, if he and another commissioner was in there, then you came and told me that we could not, another one could not be in there. And if there was one, then the sergeant-at-arms, which would be Mr. Cavazos, was to remove one of us. Now, if I go in there, I'm an elected official, and if the judge is dispensing any type of information in, under this scenario, are you going to tell me that I don't have the right to be there so that I can be able to tell my constituents and my residents in Precinct One?
Yes, you don't. I mean, I can't change the law.
Give me a break.
See, you act as a commission, you act here as a body. You don't act individually. And your individual actions, so, but when you appear there, the key is if you're discussing, and discussing has been defined many times to include listening to. If there's a quorum present and you're discussing public business, which is defined as public business or policy over which you have authority, then you can't have a quorum present. It's just that simple. Now, in an EOC, there are circumstances under which you have an evolving situation and maybe a later, you know, you go into the meeting at a later time, you're not getting the same information at once. But if three of you are present, that's clearly a meeting in the EOC. Now, because that's, if you want it accessible to the public, you could post it and do that, that's not a problem. If you post it, then you could, because that, you have to make it accessible to the public, like holding a meeting here. And that you could do, then you could be present. But the Open Meeting Act doesn't relax just because of the circumstances. If there are three commissioners present, that's a quorum and that's a meeting.
So how do we get around who we met the other day with Congressman Oberstarr? All five of us were there.
Were? I didn't know about that.
Well.
Well, I think we can pass that.
It's a social function.
You only apply the law when it's convenient to you all.
No, that's not so. The social function exception, if that was a social function, that's a different exception.
Again, wait a minute, you know, I mean, how we got over that is, I made one phone call and I says, this is going to be a social function. There's not an agenda, there's not a meeting, there's, it's a sit-down supper, okay? And, you know, I'm going to invite the commissioners and sit, everybody separate and apart. And there were name tags on tables. And there were folks, for no reason whatsoever, sitting in totally different areas of the room. And there was no business discussed. The only comments that were made were by the chairman, the welcome to the area, and what he had seen that day. But as far as like, you know, we want you to do this, this, you know, none of that was mentioned. We just thanked him for what he did and what he saw and had supper. I mean, the other choice.
But you had something I'm not against.
Well, the other choice would have been to not involve, I was just looking for like a loophole in the process to be able to do it.
Exactly. Okay, to show Congressman Oberstarr our needs in our area.
And to show the unity of the commission.
Exactly, exactly.
It was really important and I thank everyone for being there that night.
Mr. Garza, I understand that definition says that if no public business is defined in the act is discussed, then it's a social function and you can attend.
That's what it was.
And that's fine. What, here's an AG's opinion and it's citing the case, and it says, we address whether a pricing committee may hold a meeting in the office of an underwriter in New York City or other financial outside the state. We conclude that the act requires a meeting of government to be held in a location accessible to the public and therefore includes a price committee meeting in an inaccessible location such as the office of underwriter in another state. That's one case. So the problem is not that you can't post it here, that you can do. I mean, that's the required posting, you've got to post it here and you have to comply with all posting requirements. But that's not the issue here. The issue is when you start holding meetings out of state, it's the accessibility to the public. And we're talking about our public, you know, the public here that are your constituents. And that's the issue, and you've got to address each one of these issues under the Open Meeting Act. You can't just address posting, notice, or quorum, or definition of public business. All of them have to come into play in order to make the meeting an illegal meeting.
Bottom line, I would appreciate it from both Pete and David that the next time that this court is considering visiting Washington, I would like to be included.
Judge, commissioners, we did, I had a lengthy conversation that afternoon with Commissioner Benavides with respect to the comments you made, Commissioner, and Commissioner Wood. I did tell her, gave her our commitment that all of you are going to have an advance notice of what trip's going on, at what time, and what other issues are we going to discuss.
We have a trip to Mexico City next week.
We will commit and obligate to do that.
I can't go.
To make sure that everybody knows what's going on. So I did make that commitment to Commissioner Wood from my own.
I would like that any of us, whether it's Commissioner Benavides or Commissioner Wood, if you have a specific reason and want to go to Washington, you can come forth and plan it. Talk to the judge, talk to the county administrator. We all have, not all the precincts are cut with the same mold, we all have some similar problems and some of us have specific problems that other precincts might not have. So I don't see anything wrong, Commissioner Benavides, in you saying, okay, this is going to be my agenda, this is why I want to go to Washington. You're being specific, you have certain things you want to go get done in Washington, certain people you want to talk to, and just plan the trip.
Yeah, and the issue of going separately, in my opinion, I don't think that's a good idea. I mean, we go over there, all of us united, on issues that are important to us and so we should be together. I mean, if the issue of a quorum's going to be an issue, then we have to overcome that or work it out somehow. But going separately and, you know, having meetings and then having no meetings and elected officials from his county.
Well, David, what I'm saying is that she approached the judge and Pete, and that way you all decide, you know, you have certain trips you're taking. I'm not saying that she go out like a lone ranger, that's not what I'm saying. And I guess I didn't articulate my position clearly.
Right.
But what I'm saying is that she should come to you, to Pete and to the judge, and say, these are the specific things I want to address, and then it would be fit into one of the trips. She's not going to be a lone ranger, she would be representing this court.
From the very beginning, Commissioner.
Huh?
From the very beginning, when I came on board, I told Pete that I wanted to learn the process and I wanted to participate. You know, I know that my husband didn't especially like to travel, but that I wanted to learn the process. So he was well aware of it.
Well, if we're going to be confessing, I'm going to tell Pete and David and Josh and everybody else and you and everybody, sometimes I find out that people at this court were in Mexico City a week after they get back. Sometimes I find out that they were, you know, I mean, and, hey, when I hear that, I'm glad you went and I didn't go for the most of the time. I mean, I really rather stay close to home, I don't travel much.
Well, but at the same time, I don't, I don't go around, I mean, if I don't say that I'm going, I don't know that it's being hidden from you.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, it goes back to the statement.
So I just wanted to bring out, you know, the fact that I've been here three years and I haven't been able to participate in it, and I find that upsetting, to say the least.
The judge just mentioned the possibility, apparently it's not confirmed, you had a trip to Mexico City next week. What does that have to do with?
West Rail.
West Rail.
And we just talked about that the last three or four days, you know, but I told them that I, you know, I cannot go. So, and I think you're trying to confirm it up, and I think I told you in DC, you know, I cannot make that trip, so any, you know, if two members want to go, two members want to go, work it out with Pete, whomever.
The West Rail's been a project ongoing for over 10 years. It's a project that I recall going with, as a city commissioner, with Mayor Vela. The first time we sat down around the table with UP folks and everybody else involved at SCT's office and hammered out, I think you might remember, a very rudimentary MOU that didn't get signed by everybody. And so for 10 years, we've been working on that. And I understand it did get signed recently, but it didn't happen overnight, it's been a long-term process. And I will say, I have been on many of the trips to Mexico City because, one, I guess the West Rail is in my precinct, and two, it's something that I've been following for 10 years from the time I was with the city. It would have been nice to know, you know, that there is a possible trip planned in Mexico City next week. The judge is indicating anyone else can go, well, was that the situation before you couldn't go?
I don't know. No, we just, again, we just talked about this a couple of days ago. There might be a trip planned for next week. I said, well, I'm tied up next week, which is, yeah, next week.
I guess we're all saying the same thing.
But I ask you right now, is it confirmed or not?
Communication, communication.
No, it's not confirmed yet. I don't think that he can convey, until it's confirmed, hey, we got a confirmed meeting, but there's no point letting nobody know, it might happen if it's not going to happen.
He can convey that it may be confirmed because sometimes people make, need to make arrangements to be able to go as opposed to two or three days before saying the trips in two days, you know? And if you haven't made arrangements, you know, you've got a conflict.
Well, that's what happened in DC. I mean, it happened kind of quickly.
Other people may have conflicts.
Quite a lot.
Sometimes they're very quick.
I think we're letting everybody know that there might be a trip next week, and I guess if you get it confirmed, work it out with whom's going to go. You know, I don't think Commissioner Garza's going to go, I'm not going to go.
I'm tied up.
Commissioner, right now, there you go, two guys. So if y'all can work it out.
And Josh will get those meetings more so than I have.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather have the individual that has a better background, a better history. I mean, I've been part of what we do here.
You're the I-69 guy, David.
That's it.
And several other issues too.
That's it, but that's, you know.
Judge?
And you.
Yes. I would make a suggestion, what you have on the agenda, you know, is this is appropriate for, but there's nothing wrong with having, like, if you get advance notice of a trip for whatever purpose, there's going to be a meeting that needs to be, take place with a congressman in DC or New Mexico, or Mexico, wherever. You can't, there's nothing wrong with having a policy in place, when you place it on the agenda before that, have an open discussion just like this and determine who's most appropriate to attend it. So there was only two attendants.
The problem with that sometimes, Richard, and it's been pointed out here, is that in Mexico and in other places, they may call two days before and say, okay, we're going to meet with you, go after tomorrow, or tomorrow sometimes. And that's all you can do. Now, as long as a quorum doesn't go, I understand you don't have a problem with that. But we don't know about it until after people get back.
After they've been.
And the problem with going to Mexico, I haven't got it handed, but I believe there's law, or at least AG opinions on that, that just going across the border is not accessible to the public, you can't post a meeting.
International law besides Open Meetings Act.
All right.
Okay.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge the lively discussion?
So you?
Moved by Commissioner Tomayo, seconded by Commissioner Garcia, and further discussion?
Say second.
You didn't say second?
No.
Okay. Second. All in favor, simply by saying aye. Thank you, Richard, and you oppose Adam Carries. Item D, consideration authorization to request budget for the Olmito switch, switch, switchyard, switchyard.
Switchyard.
Switchyard project. Judge and commissioners.
Finally.
With a glass story, comments from Tech Dot on the design and the engineering to their satisfaction. Last night, the city of Harlingen approved. This morning, I got the signed executed copy of the agreement and I sent it over to Union Pacific and Real Valley Switching Company. I'm hoping that I can get their signatures today. Once we do this, I'll send it to Tech Dot. Tech Dot will forward a recommendation to the Federal Highway Administration. Then we'll get a letter of authority for construction from the Federal Highway Administration. I'm hoping that can be done in the next couple of days. If we get it before next Wednesday at noon, we can possibly advertise the next Sunday, a couple of days after Wednesday. If we get it afterwards, then it'll be the following Sunday, so. But everything's, everything's in place for the exception of the signature from UP and Real Valley.
Well, we can approve it though.
Yes.
I would like to move that, but I would like to have hoped that you would include in the caption, the Olmito switchyard project, in parentheses, the UP switchyard in Harlingen, Texas relocating to Olmito, which will relieve congestion in four major intersections in the city of Harlingen three times a day. That will make a huge difference in the quality of life for the folks in that community.
In other words, you want the justification.
At eight, 12, and five.
Yes.
The traveling public in Harlingen will benefit from this greatly as well as UP.
This is a monumental project as far as that part of our community is concerned.
Definitely.
Do I hear motion?
Second.
Oh, Commissioner Garcia, motion, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, simply by saying aye. And you oppose, Adam Carries. Discussion regarding the status of Tech Dot US 77 I-69 upgrades from Corpus Christi to
Judge and commissioners, I asked David Garcia to pass out a part of a presentation that was given to the Tech Dot commissioners by staff a week and a half ago. And there was another meeting that I attended, we flew up one day and came back the next. The overview includes what staff recommendation to the commission was. I think if you go to page, we already know about the need and everything else, but if, the key for us was page 77 and page 78, which are towards the end of the handout. We attended a workshop Wednesday afternoon from 1:00. And again, you know, I mean, this was something that we knew was coming up, I had talked to this court about it, and I asked the judge to go because, again, he's got some stroke with some folks there, and I figured we needed all the stroke we could get. We flew up Wednesday directly from the flight, we went to a workshop meeting that occurred at Tech Dot. They had a workshop the day before their regular meeting. We attended the meeting and we had the project timeline and lead-in dates on four projects that they're looking at funding. The funding total war, the potential funding that they're giving, allocating is $92.5 million for four projects, all of which are outside of Cameron County, but all of which directly impact Cameron County. It's a project in Willacy County, a project in Kennedy County, a project in Nuesis, and a project in Clayburn County. This would be a major, major effort on Tech Dot part in making their commitment to improving what needs to be done on 77 and bringing it to interstate standards. They have projected timelines and lead-in dates. They also commit the Cameron County RMA to participate in some project development cost, which the RMA has already considered in one of their agendas and agreed to do. And, you know, we are, we asked them for something in writing other than the presentation, and they have not provided yet that to us. I know that John Barton, who is the executive director under Amadeo Science, was here yesterday, and I would hope that, I know he visited with the judge minimally, I would hope he'd have something to add, Judge.
No, I think he was here to get a better look at what we needed. The commitment from Tech Dot is significant. It sets the pace for this highway to become an interstate. And again, it was a meeting that we did attend, it was a long workshop, I lost my voice up there, but something that is desperately needed, as Commissioner Wood pointed out. Some of these projects have been in the works, you know, for a number of years.
A long time.
And it just happens that now it's, they're starting to come to fruition. But aside from that, you know, Tech Dot's, I want to see something in writing.
aside from that, you know, Tech Dot's, I want to see something in writing from them. I've asked them for something in writing, and they said they would get something to us in writing the next couple of weeks.
You're referring to the continuation beyond this?
Yes.
So, I mean, this was, this was, and you're right, this is a monumental.
This was a big deal.
Do they have a schedule on getting this on Tech Dot's commission agenda?
Not on their agenda, well, they're already.
They're gonna have to do some minute orders somehow to approve some funding here.
But, it's, this is all, of course, they have to approve some funding and agree to do in some PS and E on some of the projects, okay? But, everything is pretty much dependent on the Fonzie being issued in November of this year.
Do you mind if I explain, for the people that are watching, what Fonzie is?
I don't know.
It's a finding of no significant. They would say it's.
Judge, Commissioners, this project needs an environmental assessment done on the corridor, and right now, that's what's currently taking place on the project, and so the timeline for that record of decision to get a finding of no significant impact.
And that's what Fonzie means.
Of Fonzie is later this year, November of 2010, is what the consultants that are working on behalf of Tech Dot for this corridor from Corpus to Brownsville are telling us. And so, in order for us to be ready to have design complete and go to construction on certain segments or portions of this, we need to have construction divers in place, and some of these commitments are for construction divers, potential commitments on certain segments of that corridor.
And, and I think the ones closest to us, we found out, you know, in the last few days, that in Cameron County, our seventy-seven roads are already interstate standard roads, and that was part of what we did in DC when we were there, we were asked to support an initiative, because we are on the border, there's a statute that allows the interstate, that a road to be changed to an interstate with an interstate shield on it, up to the Cameron County line. The, the first project that would impact us is the Willacy project, which is spur fifty-six, and that project would take us all the way to the end of the Willacy County line with one project in itself, and that's just an overpass project that needs to be.
That they're working on, yeah.
So, you know, it's, it looks very promising, it's, it's gonna be a piecemeal effort, and, you know, we can't expect to be funded totally at one time, but it's, it's a good commitment from the folks up there.
Well, I think it's a commitment that they're going to continue.
As each of these pieces get completed, we're that much farther along.
Right.
I know, you know, fifteen years ago, at I-69 meeting with Mr. Armstrong, and a lot of other folks up and down the area, it was, everyone knew it was gonna be a long time, and everyone knew it was gonna be a piecemeal deal, and I think we all should be very happy that it's gotten this far this soon, and hopefully Tech Dot will come through with the balance of the funding, and the Fonzie gets issued.
Can I talk about the, the other meetings that we had? Because it's kind of like I-69 upgrades, which was the main.
Which meetings, Steve?
The DC meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all related. I mean, it's, that was a major focus of that trip also, along with a caveat of other, a few other things that, that were involved, but just for the record, you know, we, we went and traveled from noon to evening on Sunday, got there, Monday morning, we met with Frank DeJemirano, who was a deputy director for the ARA Act, or the stimulus package, and he is, and he is in the office of the vice president, you know, we were facilitated for that meeting with Mo Vela, who is, Mo Vela's son, that is.
Who also attended the meeting.
That, that attended the meeting also for us there, and, you know, we presented to this gentleman the projects that we have that are stimulus funded, and the timelines, when we expect those to break ground, how soon all this will be occurring, and the impact to our communities in regard to each one of the projects, and how it's gonna help. We also, at the same time, at the vice president's office, extended an invitation for any of the groundbreakings. He had a scheduled trip to Texas that got descheduled, so they're trying to schedule him to come back to Texas, so we, we asked that, that if possible, they might incorporate a trip down here for one of the groundbreakings. This will all occur after the March primaries, they're all kind of like busy till then, so there is a possibility, and maybe if not him, a representative from his office would join us. After that meeting, we met with the State Department, Stuart Tuttle, who is the person in charge of the Mexican Affairs Department, discussed, of course, the status of the bridge with him, and, you know, the other necessary note exchange and things of that nature that are transpiring. Pete and David brought him up to date on pretty much everything that, that we are up to now, and what we anticipate in the next.
On the West Rail, Veterans Bridge, and future bridges?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, and they're ready to work with us, and the door is open there. After that meeting, we met with Bill Richards, who is a chief of staff of Chairman Overstar, and Denise Blanchard with Congressman Ortiz's office, and visited with him in regards to, kind of like a recap of the trip that they had taken, and making sure that they had no more questions that we needed to answer for them in regards to any of the things we had done, and of course, asked about our Tiger grant applications that are in the pipeline, that, and again, it's one of those ORCA projects, you know, fifty million in needs, nine million in dollars, in this case, it was a hundred and, a hundred and some billion dollars, but only eight billion available, so, you know, we hope to hear in the next couple of weeks from them in regards to what might be available, or what might we qualify for. After that, we met with Connie Humphries in Congressman Inojosa's office, and expressed to her their, their help in Interstate seventy-seven, Congressman Inojosa does have a part of our county in his district. After that, we met with Matt King, who is the deputy chief of staff for Congressman Ortiz, in charge of transportation issues, and we had a very healthy, good, long meeting with him, updating him on all the projects also.
Commissioner, there is, there is a letter that is being spearheaded by Congressman's office regarding interstate signage.
Right.
And getting, basically, all of Cameron County signed to interstate standards, putting a shield up, and so we had a lengthy discussion on that issue, and getting a letter to the Secretary of Transportation. We talked to Mario Horka during that conversation, to make sure we were all clear on what we needed to do, and so, you know, there's gonna be a big push to, to put shields in the areas of the corridor that already are up to interstate standards.
And that's using the statute that allows you to use the border as the end of the reason. And, you know, that, that was with Connie Humphries, and then also with Matt King, you know, we discussed that with both of them. After that, we met with Senator Cornyn, and he was also, you know, talked to some of his staff members, briefed them on all the projects that we had, we had to define what stimulus meant for him, because he couldn't remember, Tiger grants, I'm sorry, you know.
Didn't remember the name.
Didn't remember what Tiger meant, you know, but we, we visited with him, and he is very supportive of all our projects, and that pretty much ended our day. The next day, we met with Kay Bailey Hutchison's person in charge of transportation issues, which was Patrick Mulane, and had a lengthy discussion with them in regards to the issues that we have. I might add that, you know, it was a very good discussion there also, and the last meeting we had, probably one of the more important meetings, was with Jeff Komb, Komb, Kob, he was the director on the House Committee on Highways and Transit, and Peter Gold also in that area, and they were, they're the committee that Chairman Overstar has to see all these projects in transportation and infrastructure. So we were able to present to them what we're doing, what we have done, and of course, they are the ones that are looking at the reauthorization bill for transportation. The good news, or bad news, is that they're probably not gonna have a new transportation bill till next spring. The good news is that we have ability to provide information, and we asked them, you know, we don't want a hundred million dollars tomorrow, we'll take twenty million a year for the next five years, you know, and, and they see those issues as very real in regards to their commitment, you know, I think one of the questions that we were asked was, why is an interstate so important? And, and of course, we expressed the concern that everyone has, is when major corporations want to move into your area, interstate shields on highways are very critical, and, you know, we, we are looking at economic development, we've showed them the CCRMA map of projected projects, and how they basically all lead to this same corridor, and the port, whether it's a port, whether it's Mexico, whether it's a port of entry, you know, they all lead to the same corridor. The second causeway, it's the same corridor that we all want to feed into. So, very impressed with the projects that we have on the table that are being looked at by the CCRMA, they understand the importance of the upgrades, and most importantly, they understand that we know that when they have a shield that says interstate on it, we can access a completely different pot of money at the federal level, which is the interstate fund, which now is inaccessible to us. So it's very important that if we get called, any one of us, whether we support a shield on our roads as an interstate, that we say not only yes, but, you know, heck yes.
Sure.
So, you know, that's pretty much what occurred, what, what the group did, and the visits we made.
Judge, I don't know if you have anything else you want to pop, I think you've covered it.
I have something to add.
I think you've covered it, thank you, Commissioner.
About communication, and, and this is very enlightening, you know, it's, it's good to see how, what all you've covered, but getting back to the communication, Pete, I think, and I know I was asked, and not, and not in a negative manner, I was at some social gatherings, and people asked me, they said, we know the judge, and one of the commissioners is, is going to Washington, what are they gonna cover? Well, I, I was pretty much, in, in my own opinion, not that, that I had received a, a specific agenda, that it, that it would be transportation and projects, and trying to see, you know, about getting more money. I think it would be helpful if, before the trip is taken, whoever is going, that we be given a summarized agenda of, of what's gonna be covered when you're in Washington, and then I would have appreciated all this information in writing before, you know, when you, when you returned. So I, I think that will improve communication for all of us, and, and this was enlightening, but I think I do better, I guess I'm a visual learner, I do better at, at reading my information, and, and of course, if I listen to it, that's, that's even better, but, but I prefer reading it, and then I might, when you, when we come to the commissioners' meeting and you give a report orally, I might have some questions, because I've already read the material that was presented. Just a recommendation.
All right, that was item E. Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
So, move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item F, discussion authorization to submit Cameron County fiscal year 2011 appropriations requests to Congress.
We have received the appropriation forms from the House side for the appropriations bill, we have not received anything from the Senate side, I think they're just going out probably this week. In the past, we have included projects such as the North Rail and the West Rail for appropriation funding, I think, you know, we're pretty much done with funding for those two projects, so we can focus on other projects. The past, we've also gotten funded, the East Loop project and the FM-509 project, although they've been three, four hundred thousand dollars, you know, per appropriation year, so not a significant amount of money, but I think in the, in the East Loop, we might be up to about a million dollars in total, as well as in the FM-509. One project that definitely is gonna be submitted for the reauthorization, or the new transportation bill, is US-77, and try to include it in the new bill so that annually we can get an appropriation. We probably will submit it as one of our appropriations as well, I'm not sure that we can get funded, but definitely in the new transportation bill. So, in the next couple of days, if, if y'all can email us, let us know what projects you want us to submit funding for. It might, it might come, because of the fact that funding is very limited, it might come to, we might just have to prioritize for down to one or two projects, and, and as, as the process goes along, you know, we'll let you know what we were hearing from the staffers, and then we'll go from there, but those, so the projects we've gotten funded in the past, East Loop, 509, so those two are probably automatic that we'll submit applications for, but if there are any other projects that you all want us to prepare an application and submit it for funding, let us know. The House side, I think the forms are due the last week in February, the Senate, probably a couple of weeks after that.
And they said they had mailed those out.
On the House side, yes.
Yeah, on Friday. Okay. I would hope that, and then we'll approve them all as a court, before we send them out.
Yeah, from my own, we'll put a weekly agenda item.
Yeah, okay.
Keep us up to date.
Hear motion to acknowledge?
So, move.
Seconded by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item G, consideration authorization to exempt the amended TWC Commercial Service Agreement, original contract 2009C-10345, from the order establishing contract approval procedures, order number 200904013.
Judge, item G and item H actually go together, item G is asking the court to exempt the contract in item H from the order establishing contract approval procedures.
And why are we exempting it?
The vendor is, has indicated that it's against their county, or their internal policy to actually sign a contract before releasing it, so that's why we asked the court if we would exempt this contract and move forward with the.
Let me check with.
Yes, I did check.
This is what we do.
What they're doing, yes, you do it, it's just because they won't sign it first, and the order is usually that, that the vendor has to sign first, before the county judge, so he has to place it, a separate, deny them asking it to be exempted from that order.
All right, so we're gonna do G and H together?
That's fine, Judge.
Item H, consideration authorization to approve the amended services agreement, original contract 2009C-10345 from TWC. Moved by Commissioner Benavides.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item I, consideration possible action regarding the contract from AT&amp;T for the, what is that? Voice, VoIP, voice DNA telecommunications system for the Dancy Building and San Antonio Annex.
It's the voice over IP, it's our telephone system that we currently have for, for this building and for the San Bernardino Annex. Recently, we've been experiencing a series of issues, I don't know about you all, but I think we were out, without phone service for hours last week, and.
We were days.
Yeah, I mean, we just couldn't get in, couldn't get out, I mean, you could dial out, but you just couldn't get your phone.
Phone rang in and. We had to forward our calls to mobile phones to be able to answer calls.
This has been going on for a while, I mean, this is, we had a meeting with them, and they said they're gonna be able to fix it, and. Well, I believe they fixed one problem, and then another problem resulted, and it's, it's been numerous of issues that have resulted since we went live with the, with the voice DNA system, and I put this item on the agenda for discussion, and to ask the court their recommendation of moving forward with possibly a different system. We have been researching different systems that do handle voice over IP, we've researched a Cisco system that's, that's based on the same platform.
Where's Mike, Mike Forbes, our procurement guy on this, have you checked with him to see, you know, what the timeframe is?
Mike has actually been a great help, he sends us a lot of information on certain carriers through either DIR or TIPS contract, or using an interlocal contract, who can be able to make an easy transition.
What are you recommending, Robert?
I'd recommend that we do research another option, possibly go with a Cisco platform.
Is Cisco on the buy board?
Yes, they are buy board.
You know, Cisco, remember, Mike, was the initial system we were looking at way in the beginning, but was it a cost issue, or what was it? I remember we, we.
No bid.
I'm sorry?
I believe it wasn't cost issue at that time.
Yeah, 'cause they had, they had the really, you know, transparent system in how they, how they operated, you know.
But from then to now, their, their pricing is more aggressive than it was back then. The thing we have looked at is the price as well.
If we make a change in the system, is there gonna be some cost involved with hardware, or are we gonna be able to use the same?
We'd be able to use existing hardware, that's our focus, it's not to change the current phones that we have, so we won't incur the additional cost.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, so what direction do you need from us, just to move forward?
Correct, yes, Judge.
Do I hear motion to explore, Robert, to explore other options?
So, move.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item J, consideration and possible action regarding the fiscal year 2009, 2010 wish list equipment.
Judge and Commissioners, we sent out to you yesterday.
Judge and Commissioners, I sent out to you yesterday, less than, I also provided a copy in case y'all didn't have the copies. Earlier this week, myself, Mrs. Galarza, and Fitzapulo that met, it kind of went over the list. As in years past, of course, the requests were significantly greater than the total amount available. The total amount requested for the general fund side was just over 3.3 million dollars. We had available 1.4. The road and bridge...
Okay, hold on, let's start with general fund first. The request was 3.3 million?
Yes.
Okay.
And you recommended it at 1.19?
You're recommending 1.119?
And I'll tell you why.
That's fine.
A little bit, but that's what the recommended column is.
And that keeps us in terms of our cash flow outlay, where we are?
The same. Well, when you combine, let me talk about road and bridge first.
Okay.
The road and bridge, we had 800,000 available in order to maintain the same payment. The total list is just over, request just over a million dollars. So if you take, so in total, between the general fund and the road and bridge, we had 2.2 available.
Okay, so that's where you're going to fund the difference?
If you combine the two lists, we stay the same in the total payments for equipment purchases.
So you're going to transfer?
Basically, we're shifting tax rate in order from that portion to the road and bridge portion to pay for that.
Okay.
Total amount stays the same.
Okay, about a quarter of a penny then, roughly.
Yeah.
Okay, or point two.
Correct.
Gotcha.
What we are recommending, and of course, it's up to the Commissioners' Court, in relation, there was several departments with computer requests again this year, the same as last year. What we're proposing is to do the same thing that we did last year, what the Commissioners' Court adopted, was if you notice at the very bottom of the general fund, there's an allocation of 48,000 dollars for the replacement of computers. What we did last year was similar, we set aside, I don't remember the exact amount, funds for when the computers actually went down. There was this pot of funds set aside to whether the departments just requested it, and then they were purchased on an as-needed basis when they actually were no longer usable. We also have, there was the Sheriff's Department and some of the other constables that were requested bulletproof vests or armored vests. We know there's grant funding out there, but we don't know how much. So what we proposed is to set aside 55,000 dollars for armored vests and to be purchased and then offset with whatever grant funds that are available for that.
Who will be writing these grants, Javier?
Actually, PD&amp;M has, a couple of years ago, they actually found a grant, and I know they're out there, I actually have Reina with the Sheriff's Department mentioned that he thinks there's grants out there for bulletproof vests where they basically pay half. We would pay half, and then they reimburse us the other half.
And who will be writing the grants?
PD&amp;M did it last time, so I imagine they could spearhead it again this time. On the last page, the park system, that's their request, and speaking with Mr. Meden, and I have here, the right-hand column is not the recommended, what it is is mainly to show what the requirement would be on a yearly basis if it were financed over three years, because they currently don't have an equipment list being financed, so this would actually be in addition to their current budget. I believe in our discussion, this would be the maximum. There are actually some items on here where they may go to the Texas surplus and see if there's some items that they could purchase at a lower cost as opposed to purchasing them new and then financing them. I don't know if y'all have had time to actually review.
Can I show it yesterday?
Okay. And again, the main focus when we went through this was on the law enforcement side, because there's a great need in reference to the vehicles. You know, I spoke with Lee Lozano, the Vehicle Maintenance Director, as far as the recommendation on the replacements.
Did you go over these recommendations with everybody that submitted their equipment list, so they are aware of what you're not funding?
This was actually, we finalized this between ourselves right before I sent it out to y'all, which was yesterday.
Okay, don't you think that you may want to maybe visit with them and see if, within the numbers that they are, okay, within the budget that you're suggesting, let's say if they want to shift, you know, they'd look at it and say, you know what, I guess we can do without with this, but we really need this, versus rather you making the determinations to what is a priority?
Well, I didn't go back and confirm this, but when the requests, the notice to submit their requests were sent out, they were supposed to be listed in order of priority.
That's what I was told.
All right.
And I did meet with, or speak with Javier Reina, I don't know if he's still here.
Well, as an example, if we go to the sheriff's office, they listed as a priority, let's say, traffic radars and install and remove something, I don't know. But you skip those two, and then went to providing a couple of jail vans.
One jail van.
Or one jail van. So, I guess, did you just bring the jail van or...
No, the reason because of the jail van is, in speaking with Mr. Lozano from the Vehicle Maintenance Department, was they really need to replace one of those vans. I think one of the ones that they have has in excess of 200,000 miles. And those are the ones that they use for transporting inmates.
So you did do follow-up communication with various departments?
The only departments that I've spoken to was with the Sheriff's Department. I spoke with a district clerk's office, that was this morning, the tax office.
Yeah, Roger.
I would like to, as you suggested, to see, we had, like us, you know, this is all very important information for us, because in our department, just recently, we lost four laptops, and these are very essential.
When you say you lost them, did they walk out, or did they just crashed on you?
They crashed on us.
Okay.
And these laptops, the users are incredibly poor for change, now and then, and they let out exactly.
Well, let me recommend this, maybe this will take care of you. Keeping within the dollar framework that you're presenting, I would go back, anybody else that is listening that's on this list, keeping within those dollars, just verify with them in terms of where you've allocated the money be spent. Like if Roger may have a change, look, I don't need it here, I need it over here instead, then make that change and then bring that back to us, as long as the dollar numbers don't change. We're kind of locked into those in terms of if we want to keep the same payment structure, and I think that's what we want to do. And then come back and then bring it to us at the next time.
I think in Roger's case, it's a little bit different, because if you have four laptops that don't operate anymore, and those are essential, 2,300 isn't going to replace four laptops, it might replace...
Well, we set aside 48,000 for computers.
You know, I think we ought to consider...
So you go to computers on that.
Yeah, I think we ought to consider something else. You know, I recently had one of my, the only kid that's still in school, you know, had an issue with his laptop, and it wasn't working, and of course, they want the new and best and more, you know, technology and all this stuff. And, you know, the fix was a new computer for 1,100 bucks. Well, I went to a guy in Harlingen, and he charged me 35 dollars to tell me how much it would cost to fix that laptop that's three years old. For 160 bucks, guess what? That laptop is working just fine. So, we might consider, instead of disposing of these laptops, especially when you use them for one function pretty much only, you know, we might consider looking at some of these services out there. They're everywhere, you know, and they're minimal cost services. That was a new drive, a new motherboard installed and everything else, and...
Yeah, a lot of times, a lot of times, it just may need some cleaning up.
That's what Thomas deserves, and you're...
Oh, yes.
There's a lot of, I don't know all the terms, you know, but I know our laptops, I know that there are companies that look at and try to see if they're going, you know, but that happens, you know, we go in.
I don't know, the computer department that we have does more diagnostic stuff or more actual fixing what the problem is, you know.
I guess it's a directive that we give them.
I mean, I think we ought to consider, I don't know.
I thought it's a good idea.
And the actual recommendation for the replacement of the computers would come from the computer department after they've checked it and said, well, there's nothing weak, and there may be somebody else who can. I don't know as far as the limitations that's there, you know, repairing computers, but the recommendation for replacement would actually be coming from them, you know, we can't do anything with it, we need to get a new computer.
How many computers do we have? I know this is kind of a funny question, but how many computers do we have that are inoperable, that we just have them on somebody's shelf that are just sitting there? Anybody have any idea? And if you don't know, we may want to inventory those, and then maybe go out and maybe solicit a bid from a geek or one of these guys that comes out and they can, well, that's what they got, Geeks or Us, or whatever it is.
Geek Squad.
Yeah, the Geek Squad, or whatever, and come up and give us a price on what it would take to evaluate them. And, you know, let's just go ahead and do it, and I don't, Commissioner, take it a step further, not just let's think about it, let's just go ahead and do that. And if we save five or six of these things, they're more than, it would more than pay for themselves. Do you look into that, Robert?
We can do that, yes, Judge.
Okay, just take inventory of the...
You know, and one of my concerns is that you need four, but you asked for 10, Roger. You know, I mean, you know, and I think if every department uses that same, you know, like, I need one, but I'm going to ask for six, just in case.
I've been asking for a change, you can call from, as well as when we start, I started replacing those computers, because we started replacing laptops again from the year 2000. Some of those laptops don't have the USB ports anymore, we're intending to buy adapters for it, because we can't, we cannot connect, for example, your readers for your graphics devices, they wouldn't have cars, you know, the old, the old, we have one USB port.
Yeah, but you can get one that has a port with four, for like eight bucks.
We find that, you know, but, I mean, that's not, you know, we've not, more than did that, so we just, last year, we replaced some laptops already, and we replaced, we did, 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 we[1403.12] Then I need to place more importance on that, give that priority, and please those poor laptops, I know I'm not going to get it taken. So if I can get that, those laptops, I really need to replace those parts.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Don't go too far because your agenda item is next. So, is that the direction you'd like to give Javier to work with the parameters, the dollars, and then just get with those departments that in case they want to switch them around somewhere, let them make the decision versus you trying to make it?
Unless there's some departments that have a sense of urgency, I see Lee back there, is that your case, Lee?
You're going to have everybody start standing, like, everyone's got a sense of urgency, Javier up there.
Like in the elections, that would mean that you'd lose 500 bucks, you know, or so, no more? If you give up your mini tower and get a laptop, that's $600 less that you're going to have.
That's true.
Work it out.
Judge Commissioner, I just want to emphasize the ones for the sheriff's office on those 15 patrol cars I think was recommended. And I'd like to get that approved if we can.
I think, yeah, I think those are there.
So, yeah, that's why we start the order process, because those cars take a couple of months to.
That's true, that's what I'm saying.
But I think they're on there, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, all we're talking about is for any department that, let's say, you say, you know, Javier, Chief Train now comes and says, you know what? We could use 12 and, you know, shift two over here, there's other stuff. You know, give the department the opportunity that they need to make some adjustments now that they know what the dollar allocation is to that department, they have the ability to do that. In, in the sheriff's list of items here, cages, are these the cages that go into these new vehicles we're going to get? Well, you've got to have the cages for the new vehicles, don't you, in order to transport prisoners?
They're funded.
On some, on some, they, they.
You just swap out?
They swap them out.
Okay, good, okay. Was that it, Javier? Thank you, okay.
Well, I don't have a problem approving it with the caveat that if a department here wishes to make a change within the allocated amount they do.
Okay.
In the next seven, or next week or so, to give you time to.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, move by Commissioner Gerson.
And you want that brought back to the court?
Second, yes, second by Commissioner Camayo. Yeah, just so we know.
You can just give it to us as information, not necessarily.
Because we're approving it already with that. Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries, Adam K. Consideration and approval to move the Los Fresnos early voting polling location weekend schedule of February 20th and 21st, 2010 to the Boys and Girls Club in Los Fresnos.
Yes, Commissioner, Judge Commissioners, I was advised by the, uh, the city of Los Fresnos that the community center was committed to others for that weekend. And we cannot, you know, I, I need to have a weekend in Los Fresnos, you know, it's a.
Okay, I don't have any problem with it, you know.
So.
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Benavides and by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries, thank you, Roger. Item L, consideration, approval of personnel policy changes on section 9.09, request for temporary replacement, Robert?
Judge Commissioners, this was an item that was brought before the, was discussed in, in court about two sessions ago. To add some language to our current policy that would better explain the, uh, the request for temporary replacement of offices that were limited to staff. In the packet before you, the first two pages are the, is the original policy. The last two pages actually is the draft with the recommendation on the very last page on the very bottom, the language that was just a recommendation. We have discussed it with legal and that is the recommendation.
Anybody have any problem with your motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item M.
It says, it says, may request, not Commissioner's Court will find.
That's correct. Item M, consideration, possible action to grant permission to Ninos Inc. for a construction of a toddler playground at the Ninos Head Start located, located at the Brownie Road Service Center, Javier?
Yes, sir, Judge Commissioners, the, um, Ninos approached me, um, they're, they're implementing a new program for their head starts. And they would like to, um, add a playground to the rear side of the building. Right now they have a, a, um, playground area, but it's for the older kids. They would like to add to, to it and, and for the, for the toddlers. They also want to do some modifications inside the building, one classroom, there's already the plumbing and everything else, they just need to modify the bathrooms and that's going to be at their cost. For diaper changing stations and so on, so.
Do they need architectural plans with ADA stamps or not? I mean, if we're going to be.
They, I mean, the building is ADA compliant, but.
But once you start making changes to those areas.
Right. Well, the, the modification is not going to be any structural modification, it's just going to be adding, removing the restroom, putting a, a changing station, diaper changing station area for, for the, for the kids. Because this, um, what they're adding to the new program is, I believe it's from zero to three years old. So they're going to have kids in diapers and now also they have to be cooking for these, for these children and so on, so. But there's not going to be any structural modification to the building now.
Will the toddler playground be connected or part of the older playground? Or will there be like a chain link between them?
There'll be a chain link, separate it, right.
Okay, so you don't mix the little ones with the big ones?
Correct. And one thing that I did, and we didn't in the amendment, of course, it's, it's the next item, was to make sure, to assure that the addition for that playground doesn't interfere with our future development of that, of that building. Because our future plans is to go out to the, to the rear of the building with a multi-service, um, room or, or gymnasium or something.
Do we get to review whatever they're going to put in there, or once we agree to this? I mean, like when, when we do our, our county playgrounds, we see a rendering, we know what's going in, we know, you know, whether it's been sealed with the good housekeeping seal of approval for kids and all of that, I mean, or we just.
I mean, we, let it go. We could, I know what, they, they are, um.
They're required to comply with all these others.
Right, I was going to say that the state, the state comes out and evaluates that building once a year.
That's what I was going to say, I think they have.
Commissioner.
Is it state or federal?
The state.
And Commissioner, in the original agreement, we look at the plans of any additions that they'll submit it to the County Parks Director for, so that he can look at them, so he can bring them to you if that's what you would like.
So they have to submit them?
They're supposed to submit the plans of any additions or, that they would like to make.
Any motion? Move by Commissioner Wood, signify by Commissioner Gerson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item N, consideration, authorization to approve amendment number one to concession agreement between Ninos Inc. and Cameron County for services at Brownie Road Social Service Center. So. Move by Commissioner Gerson, signify by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item O, discussion of possible action on issues related to policies and procedures for beach vendors, Javier?
Yes, sir. Um, I had, um, brought this before the court, um, because we, we discussed this with our park advisory board. To consider making some changes to our, to our beach vending policies. And what their recommendation was is to, of course, abolish the permitting procedures. They, they felt that there's, there's more, um, bad and good with this, with this program because of all the, the trash stuck behind, all the complaints, um, the, the safety, traffic safety on the beach and so on. So that was the reason I was bringing it before the, the Commissioners' Court, and just to express the recommendation from our park advisory board.
Javier, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of these, uh, beach vending permit rules, are these all brand new or they were existing, or have you changed some of them?
This, um, it's been, it's been changed or modified, um, three times already.
Have you start from when to when?
Okay, back in, in July 25th, 1995, um, was, I believe, when they originally were approved, I believe Ken Congo brought them before the Commissioners' Court. And then in August 12th, 2002, we brought them before the court for, for amendment, amendment. And then this, um, I believe last year, we brought them again, um, or two years ago, we brought them before the Commissioners' Court for approval.
And all these have been approved, right?
Yes.
So this is the fourth amendment?
Well.
Or change?
Change.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm not sure what, what the court wants to do, um, just speaking to some of the, the Commissioners, um, was, they want to keep the, the people selling out there, the, the program. But I guess the other recommendation from the, from the committee, um, back before they, they made a recommendation to abolish the program, was they were considering maybe increasing the fees, the permit fees. Right now it's $125 for renewal for the year. And they were talking about maybe increasing that fee.
I think Commissioner Benavides's question is, what's the difference between the policies we were presented the day to sign?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's.
Right?
There's none.
I, I'm not bringing any amendments to the, to the, to the court at all.
Okay.
This is what is in existence.
Right.
What we signed.
You're right, what I printed out and as, as a backup is just, um, it's not, it's not executed, uh, the policies, it's just what I had on my computer, I just printed it out, but I didn't get the, I didn't get the executed one.
Javier, I, I noticed that you attached a, a, a photo.
Yes, ma'am.
That was taken, uh, of one of the vending, uh, mobile units. And I think what you're trying to say is they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing by parking and selling from that area. I found this summer that while I was going, trying to alleviate the problem that, that I have as far as littering, that it's very hard to find a place to park. I mean, it's just one car right after the other, okay? And so, um, while we can call their attention to this, sometimes they don't have any other way of making their sales. Now you say, well, is the, um, the traffic congestion and of course the, the safety issue. Can I ask Mr., who's here representing Mr. Torres, so the Torres family? How long have they had these vending permits? 15 years. Javier, to your knowledge or to yours, has there ever, have they ever been involved in a traffic problem?
Hey Ed, do you mind going up to that way that you can, that the audience can hear you? Thank you.
My name is Ed Stapleton and I represent Maria Salazar, who is Ruby's Mobile Foods or Ruby's Alotes. And if I could just say that for about 15 years, they've had this business, they have not had any accidents, they maintain all of their, their insurance. They firmly believe they did not contribute to any kind of trafficking hazard because they have a, they're really limited to about two miles per hour when they drive in order to do their, their work, to do the vending. I believe that, people believe it's a very valuable service, they have both alotes and they also have ice cream. And, uh, and it provides a service to the group out there. And I would just also comment, we have a number of the owners, if y'all would stand up, and owners and employees of that business. They have been able with that to, for 15 years to keep a roof overhead and Miss Salazar has sent five kids to university with her business. So they're very concerned that any change would, uh, limit her, their ability to continue with the business on a permitting. Or if there's a large increase in the amount that they pay, that it would severely impact the business, which, you know, I mean, it's not a high margin profit business. And so, uh, we come on that basis and urge that they not be adversely impacted with that.
I have a couple of questions. Do they, do they provide any financial information to you in terms of what their gross sales are and?
I don't have it, but Miss Salazar is here.
No, I was asking, I was asking Javier if we got it as part of the, you know, as part of the, any type of requirement, you know, so you, so you, if there are going to be the adjustments to fees, you base it maybe on gross sales or something. I mean, it wouldn't be fair charging somebody that doesn't make any money the same fee as you would somebody that's sending five kids to school. But I think it's important to know that, that although there, as I've been here, I've never heard of any major issues with, with, with the vendors other than, uh, the, the driving. And it's not so much that, that they would be the direct cause of something occurring, but more so, uh, because, because people have mentioned it to me over the years, that cars will try to go around them if they stop, they'll try to go around, and that's where the danger is. If, if you've got, you know, young, young adults or kids running to and from, and you've got somebody trying to pass them on the right or the left, they just don't see them, and I don't know if. Yeah, you got a child in these pictures. You know, you can barely see. See the child in the sand, and I, I think that's, I don't think it's anything personal with the vendor, I think it's, I think Commissioner Benavides said, said the key word, and it's safety. And that's, and that's what, what this should be all about, you know, you know, is, is this a safety issue? I know that they, they comply with the permits, the health permits, et cetera, and that, that's not a problem, I think it's that. But let me ask you, just Javier, what, what was the impetus to, to bring this to us? Was there anything that had happened or occurred, or did you get concerns or complaints or what?
Well, no, generally when I, when I do a presentation to the, to the board, you know, if something comes up, you know, complaints or whatever, then I'll, I'll bring it to the board's attention.
So are the, are the parks board then getting complaints?
Well, we had a few complaints this last summer, so we brought it to their attention. And there were some suggestions from the constable about, uh, the direction of traffic, instead of having it both ways on the beach, having maybe one way. But we've, we, we looked at it and it'd be real difficult if we did that, if it was, it was one way. So, anyway, I brought it to the board's attention the first time, and then that was one of the suggestions, saying, well, let's look at the, the policies, let's see if we can revise them. And, and then one of the considerations was, or discussions was, let's increase the permits. Let's, not necessarily reduce the amount of vendors out there, but.
But let me ask you, but how would increasing the fee solve the complaints? I mean, other than making it more difficult for them to comply, I mean.
I mean, this is a one-time-a-year fee, right?
Yes, sir.
Javier, on, on your agenda item here, you're saying that they suggested increasing the fees of the permit to compensate the county staff to pick up and remove refuse left behind by their patrons. And I understand what you're saying, but why should their fees be increased if there is this problem, and I'm not sure there is this problem? Because you, you're not going to increase any fees on anyone else that the patrons might buy something from, Walmart, HEB, Valero, when they bring it in. Refuse is refuse, and no one should be throwing it, littering anywhere, but they do, and I, but I just don't see that it's the problem of these vendors. I just don't know how to make that connection.
Yeah, and, and, you know, generally, Commissioner, you know, when we go out there, um, you know, because I've visited the, and looked on the, on our guys and see the trash that they're picking up. A lot of it isn't, you know, the, the leftover alota, um, or ice cream bag or whatever. I mean, it was just, it was just something some of the committee members brought up, saying, you know, what, these, these vendors are a, a cause, or actually add to the problem of the litter on the beach. And that was, you know, I just pretty much kind of quoted what, what was the comments or the.
So what you're giving us is what your members, board members had said.
That's correct.
That we appointed.
Right.
That we appoint, yeah.
And, and, you know, the judge, the judge did, did hit on something that, um, was the reason that we, the last time that we amended the, the plan was to keep these vendors from being mobile. Because originally when these, these rules were adopted, they were for mobile vendors. Since we've, have seen not necessarily an incident, but we've seen, uh, occasion, on occasions, you know, that there could be some incidents. That's why we changed or amended our policy, to keep these, the vendors from being mobile and just being stationary, where if somebody wanted to go buy something from them, they could just walk up to the vehicle on the west side of the, of the road. Instead of having to cross the, the traffic and get across to, to buy something from these vendors.
And I think at the time that we did that, I think you all had designated that they move, um, every half hour, about a quarter mile.
Location to location.
Okay. I tried walking the whole beach, tried and give out, and believe me, it's very hard to walk. And, and I think, uh, Mr. Stapleton is right, this is a valuable service that we provide to the public. And I, I don't agree that we should raise their, their permit fees. I, I don't agree that, because I'm going to tell you that there's other vendors that go into the park and they sell without permits, okay? I've spoken to Constable, um, Samora, and I've asked him, do you have problems with these vendors? No, Commissioner, I have no problems with them. So, you know, I, 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 I don't agree with this. I think, uh, these are, are people that have, are trying to make a living, and we're just trying to make them more difficult for them. Granted, the safety issue, I brought it up to, to the Torres family and the Salazar family, and because of this picture here. But I will tell you that I saw it and I experienced it, there was nowhere to park because it's one car right after the other, all the way from five to six. So unless we have a better solution for them, I mean.
They just got to get there early.
That's right.
But then, what they're supposed to move every 30 minutes or hours, they don't have any place to move to. I personally think that, you know, they provide an excellent service to the vacationers and the people that are enjoying the beach. My personal thoughts have always been that they should be able to be mobile, but I know that's not where we are right now.
And, and I don't know when this photo was taken, but it was sent to me by a complaintant, um, and, um, so that's why, you know, it was the most recent photo of anything out on the beach, so I attached it to the agenda. But, I mean, you can see there's no vehicles out there, they're, they're mobile, um, I mean, there shouldn't be a reason for them, I mean, other than trying to, um, get the business in different areas of the beach. Because you could see, I mean, there's not very much, um, people that are parked, you know, there's a distance between each, each vehicle, so, I mean, I guess what they're trying to do is take advantage of and trying to get the business and drive.
In this particular instance, you're right, there's no other cars that you can see. But we can't see what's on the other side of the, of the, of the mobile unit.
Right. So, um, you know, I know that in our, in our policies, we did ask that they set up a sort of a camp and they, they stake it, but, you know, those things don't last, people disregard that.
Or people will take gum and.
Yeah, they'll take them out and.
So what are you recommending, Javier?
I really don't have a recommendation, Commissioner, um.
We're just giving this information, feedback from your committee.
Right, and see what, what the court wants to do, I mean, if we want to continue with this, then, uh, fine, and maybe we want to restructure the fees. If we don't want to do that, then we'll just.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the item.
Yeah, sec, and I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to acknowledge the discussion. Any other comments or questions?
Commissioner Benavides, I just want to reassure myself, you, there weren't any changes that you wanted, were there?
No, no, I was just wondering if there's supposed to be any, and I think what happened here, the reason we're also, uh, talking about this item is because at the time that they tried to renew for this year was when all this deal with the Commissioners' Board and the DA's office, legal department issues came up. So we had to set it back until we kind of resolved it. So at this point, I think that's where they want, because, I mean.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. There is no problem with what is currently in place. Continue with what you're doing.
How you renew it, Javier?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item Q.
Thank you for being here.
Robert? Consideration of possible action regarding reimbursements from FEMA.
On this, this item, I, I did want to mention, um, regarding the reimbursements, I'm talking with the auditor's office. There are currently four, four cities that still owe money to the county in regards to debris, debris removal. South Padre Island was a small portion, which is $210. The other three are Santa Rosa, San Benito, and Rio Hondo. Total outstanding is $91,417. Those are the four small cities that still owe reimbursements to the county.
But what are we doing so that?
Would you please exercise your power to collect?
Sure, I will follow up with our auditor in, in regards to that, and we'll make sure we send notices and do that. The other, we are in preparation for audit, Mr. Thomas Wall from Beck Disaster Recovery is here, along with another member of his staff in preparation. I'm going to turn the floor over to Thomas, have him say a few words.
Okay, we already did P, though.
I'm sorry? We already did P, yes. Yes, P got approved. And the audit actually is scheduled for this coming Tuesday.
Good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to come up here, and, and Robert's been a great client of ours to work with. On behalf of BDR, we appreciate the opportunity to work with Cameron County and continue to support the county in your reimbursement efforts. As a matter of fact, Robert and, Robert and I and my other staff member, Mr. Danny Gardner, were here till about eight o'clock last night, getting some of the documentation ready for the FEMA audit next week. And from the looks of things, we'll probably be here pretty late tonight as well. Just wanted to let you guys know that the staff that we've worked with and, and pretty much everybody's gone now, but, uh, Robert and Martha and Mike, Louis, um, Pete and David, the, the whole staff that we worked with throughout the Dolly process, were, were extremely helpful. And you guys have a, a great staff on board, and it's been a pleasure to work down here, and we hope that we can continue to, to service you in the future, hopefully not anytime soon. But that we're here to, to continue to support you in your reimbursement efforts.
One question, the fact that we haven't been reimbursed, and it's probably more to Rob, I don't know, by those four cities, will not impact our audit, right?
No, no, that's something that I've actually talked to Martha about, and we have a procedure in place, that we'll have to go ahead and reimburse the vendors in full reimbursement, and then seek reimbursement from those cities.
Okay. But it won't adversely affect the audit process for us?
No, no, not at all. The only, the only reason is we have to actually.
Well, because we said, we have to pay upfront, basically.
Exactly, yes.
So it affects our bottom line.
Correct, correct. So I will make sure we follow through with Martha, and I know Tom from her office has been working on that.
You know, for the record, could you mention the name of those four municipalities?
Yes, South Padre Island, and actually, South Padre has a very small, small chart, it's $210. The majority of the fees are from San Benito, Rio Hondo, and Santa Rosa.
And are those significant numbers, or?
Yes.
I think it would be good if we'd know what those numbers are.
Yeah. I think I.
The, South Padre Island was $210, Santa Rosa is $44,230 with 80 cents, San Benito is $14,951 with 25 cents, and Rio Hondo is at $32,024 with 81 cents.
What was the first one, I'm sorry?
South Padre?
South Padre.
For 210.
Okay.
Yep, and then again, the majority are for the other, the other three.
Okay.
I'll talk to them.
Yeah, we'll, we can kind of encourage them.
We can help you with that.
Thank you, thank you, so any, any help from the court would be greatly, greatly appreciated, I'm sure Martha would appreciate that, too.
Motion to acknowledge report.
Second.
Any other questions of Robert?
Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Unfortunately, we don't have an adjournment motion item.
Move to adjourn.
We just stay here.
Moved and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.
Got to save this honorable court.